Good evening. If I can ask everyone to get into their seats, we'll be in the receiving awards assembly. On behalf of the Vernon Public Schools, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Students, parents, relatives, teachers, administrators, staff, and board members. At this time, I'm going to ask Joseph Chatterton, who is a student at the Vernon Center Middle School, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joseph. At this time, I'd like to welcome Bernice Dixon, the Vernon Town Clerk, who's doing the swearing-in of our newly-elected board members.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Superintendent just stated, I am the Town Clerk. I'm here tonight to swear on our new members so that they will be representing you for the next few years. So I'd like to call you by name and have you come up right in front here, please. First, Lori Majoric. Ann Fisher. Linda Gessan. Amy Teck. John Copac. And Thomas Dana Russell. Please raise your right hands. And the way we'll do it is you will each state your names instead of all of you standing around the jumper. So it would be I.
I, Linda Gessan.
I, Lori Majoric.
I, Ann Fisher.
I, David Kemp.
I, John Copac.
I, Thomas Dana Russell.
On Monday, November 9th, 2015.
I, Monday, November 9th, 2015.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
Or solemnly and sincerely affirm.
Solemnly and sincerely affirm.
As the case may be.
As the case may be.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge according to law.
Discharge according to law.
My duties.
My duties.
As the Board of Education member.
As the Board of Education member.
Of the town of Vernon.
Of the town of Vernon.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Or upon penalty of perjury.
Or upon penalty of perjury.
Congratulations. This finishes our portion of the swearing-in, and now you'll be able to proceed with the other activities for this evening and your meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon, and congratulations to our newly-elected board members. I look forward to working with you for the next few years. On behalf of the Vernon Public Schools, I'd like to welcome everyone to our annual awards ceremony. Tonight, we're here to recognize the best and brightest in our schools: students, teachers, and professionals. Each year, the teachers in Vernon choose a Teacher of the Year, someone who exemplifies all the characteristics, traits, and abilities of a great educator. There is no higher honor than to be recognized by your peers in your profession. Tonight, we'll recognize Erin Pelletier as the 2015-16 Vernon Teacher of the Year. Ms. Brenda Green will make some remarks about Mrs. Pelletier. We ask both of you, please come to the mic.
Good evening. I've had the privilege of working with Erin Pelletier for the past three years at Northeast, and it's my pleasure to speak about her this evening. We're closely with Mrs. Pelletier, with many opportunities to observe firsthand her quality as an outstanding teacher. She is just the kind of educator who represents the best in Vernon Public Schools. Erin is the model, the prototype, for a great teacher. An exceptional communicator, she reads, connects with, and engages students as individuals. In a nutshell, here's what great teachers do. For example, Erin brings learning to life with classroom visitors that complement her lessons. From an actor who portrays the life of an 18th-century American slave, to guest science teacher, to hatching ducklings, to teaching about the phases of the moon with pumpkins, to actually cooking with students, teaching moments in Erin's class are always enhanced with real-life experiences. Erin dazzles students with humor and is always willing to do whatever it takes to ensure students have a meaningful learning experience. In fact, I'm always asking Erin, "Are you teaching or just having fun?" We both know the answer, of course, that is, Erin is doing both. She is having fun because she is teaching. And her enthusiasm is infectious, rubbing off, most importantly, on her students. Erin is an example of someone born to be a teacher, who also actively acquires skills along the way. To Erin, teaching is a quality of life more than a job. She sets the bar high for students and knows how to motivate them to achieve excellence, both inside and outside the classroom. She demonstrates an unusual and consistent gift: poise, commitment, and ability to connect quickly and effectively with students, fellow teachers, and parents. Speaking of parents, they also notice Erin, sometimes in unusual ways. One parent asked her in a admiring tone, "Who was that walking at the end of the hallway?" Erin and I always chuckle at this little story, but in reality, Northeast is fortunate to have Erin Pelletier walking in the hallway as a teacher colleague, who truly represents what teaching is all about. Congratulations, Erin Pelletier.
Thank you. Tonight, we are going to recognize our superintendent award winners. Two students from each school in grades five, eight, and twelve, and a student from the Vernon Regional Adult Education Program. There are fifteen students being honored tonight in our Vernon Schools. To the students, we are proud of you. Proud that you have reached such an achievement in your educational career. You have earned special recognition as leaders, scholars, and role models for your peers. Tonight, we congratulate you. This is one achievement in your career that will be the foundation of more to come. We honor the best and the brightest, and we honor the rest and the brightest in the following: academic prowess, community service, leadership ability, strong character, innate intelligence, service to others, moral integrity, hard worker, and determination. These fifteen students embody these qualities. At this time, I'd like to ask all fifteen to stand right now so that they can be recognized for their achievement. Please stand. At this time, we're going to ask the students, their parents. Our board members each have a liaison to each school and the principal, so please come up and stand in front as we recognize the students. Will the students from Center Road School, Finley Ross and Olivia Regan, please come up? So along with our Principal Joseph Gravolich and Board Member, Board Chair Ann Fisher, we recognize Finley Ross and Olivia Regan. Finley is a responsible and conscientious student who excels in all academic areas. She devotes her time and effort in each of her assignments. She's a self-motivating student that accepts... He is a self... I'm sorry about that. I apologize. He's a self-motivating student and accepts challenges with a positive attitude. He is never satisfied with learning just the basic information. He constantly seeks additional knowledge and is willing to take upon himself to do so. It is Finley's interest and drive that will drive to give him success in the future. Fin is an example of a role model that a teacher would want in his or her classroom. He's respectful and eager to work with others and his students. He's the first student to offer assistance to another student struggling. He often asks if he can help out in any way, whether it is to check in his homework or run an errand or lend a hand to another teacher. Fin has been an active member of MAC Olympiads, Safety Patrol, Corus, BAN, Student Council, and the Marathon Club at Center Road School. Fin exemplifies our school's motto, "Be the best you can be," and everyone at Center Road is very proud of him for his accomplishment. Outside of school, Fin is a soccer, baseball, and basketball player. He also participates in the rugby program for track. Fin frequently volunteers his time for Alex's lemonade game in which his family is Connecticut State Representative's family. Three years ago, Fin underwent the procedure where he donated his own bone marrow to his younger sister to aid in the battle against childhood cancer. Today, she's cancer-free largely because of Fin's decision to donate. I cannot think of a more deserving student for this award. Congratulations. Olivia Regan. Olivia is a responsible and conscientious student who excels in all areas of the curriculum. She's enthusiastic about learning and always willing to try something new. Olivia is highly motivated to enrich her thinking. She's an active member of the Word Masters Challenge Team as well as the Writing and Writing Club. She's a true example of a role model student who can always be caught demonstrating Center Road's core expectations. She's constantly respectful to all students and staff. When someone is in need of a helping hand, you can always count on Olivia to be there. She's an active participant in BAN, Corus, Center Road Schools Jockey Club, and Student Council. This year, Olivia joined the CHRS Marathon and Marathon team and ran two miles during the Hartford Marathon. Way to go! When Olivia is not studying, you can find her on the field cheerleading for the Vernon Vipers. She also enjoys playing softball in the girls' tunnel team. Olivia is on TAC, on a top competition team, and also acts as a lead dance teacher for North Star Dance Academy. She teaches three- and four-year-old students to their dance and recital moves. We're proud of Olivia's accomplishments. Congratulations. Congratulations. Now, I'd like to call up the students from Lake Street School, Fidel Batory and Aiden Parazol, along with our Principal Tracy Wenzel, and our Board Member, for Lake Street will be John Copac. Fidel Yai Batroy. Did I butcher it again? Fadila Batroy. I apologize. Congratulations. Fadila is a fifth-grade student at Lake Street School. She's an interesting and mature student who always puts forth her very best effort in all that she does. Academically, she's high achieving, and socially, she's a positive role model for her peers. She's a very active member of Lake Street's Pride Club, which is open not only to top-performing fifth graders in the areas of conduct and effort. Within the Pride Club, she takes on multiple responsibilities, including regularly volunteering her time during recess to help prepare for school-wide morning meetings and other school events. Fadila is busy learning clarinet this year, is a two-year member of the Lake Street School Chorus, was an involved member of last year's spring musical. Additionally, she acts as a buddy to a kindergarten student, and she helps navigate the busy halls of dismissal each day. Fadila is a prime example of what is meant to be the recipient of the Superintendent's Award. Way to go! Congratulations. Aiden Parazol is a fifth-grade student at Lake Street School. In his time at Lake Street, he's proved himself to be a leader and role model for his peers. He's a kind classmate and a hard worker who consistently performs at the top of his class. He's also an active member of Lake Street's Pride Club, a club open only to fifth-grade students who perform at the top of their grade in the areas of effort and conduct. In Pride Club, he's been cited as an excellent example of a leader amongst student leaders within the group. This year, Aiden began winning saxophone as part of the SS Band Program. Outside of school, Aiden plays baseball for the Vernon Little League and soccer for the Vernon Soccer Club. For these reasons, Aiden can be what is meant to be the recipient of the Superintendent's Award. Way to go, Aiden! Congratulations. I'd like to call up Abdullah Chatri and Gwenne McCavan from Lake Street School, along with his school, Trantolo, and board members. Abdullah Chatri is recommended to be awarded for the Superintendent's Award from Maple Street. Abdullah is a well-rounded boy who strives for excellence in everything he does. Every day, Abdullah begins his day with a giant smile that would light up the room as you could see. He greets each and every person with a good morning. He will run up to a door, grab a box out of a teacher's hand to assist in carrying, guide a wayward student down the correct path. Abdullah has a kind, gentle tone to his voice. His gentle nature has gained him the trust of his peers, teachers, and members of the community. In school, he's a member of the Safety Patrol, Corus, BAN, and a member of the Leadership Committee. Abdullah is also an active member of the Vernon community. He participates in many church-based activities in his home church. He's also a member of the local YMCA where he attends programs, camps, and athletic activities. Abdullah would be an excellent candidate to receive the highest honor, the Superintendent's Award. Congratulations. Gwenne McCavan. In school, Gwenne is a model student. She works extremely hard and is very motivated. She's always willing to lend a hand, either to staff, fellow classmates, or her member peer. Gwenne is a member of the school's Safety Patrol Chorus. Gwenne, along with her family, attends the Rock Kids Church on Friday nights, where Gwenne participates in all the activities and is even performed in a few skits. On Sunday, Gwenne can often be seen helping out in the church nursery. She's a very caring and nurturing young lady. She's a wonderful example of a good citizen who not only takes care of her own priorities, but puts the needs of others in front of her own. I'm honored to have her as a student and excited to watch her grow and spread her wings. Congratulations. From Northeast School, I'd like to call up Gabriel Archibald and John Marjoloni, along with our Principal, Mrs. Brenda Green, and Mr. Mark Green, our Board Member. Gabriela Archibald. Gabriela Gabby is a phenomenal young lady. She's a beautiful girl inside and out. Gabby is very bright and doesn't take it for granted. She has such a thirst for knowledge, it takes everything she can. Math is Gabby's favorite subject. She welcomes a challenge and participates in math Olympiads at Northeast School. Gabby is a quiet leader. Her calm, peaceful demeanor makes her a perfect role model for her peers. Her classmates truly look up to her. She's recently chosen to represent Northeast School at the CAS Leadership Conference. In school, Gabby is on the cheerleading squad and a member of the Safety Patrol. She also plays the saxophone in the band. Outside of school, when Gabby's not spending time with her parents, brothers Jerry and KJ, and her sister Caitlin, she can be found cheering on the Vernon Vipers or Red Girl Scouts. She loves learning new things every day. When Gabby has free time, she enjoys playing with her ducks, lemon, and parry, which can help her when she pursues her career as a veterinarian. Gabby is so deserving of this award. She is always positive and a hard girl that strives to be the very best person she can be. Congratulations, Gabriela. John Marjoloni. Did I say it right? You did, Mom. You've got to go with it, John. Meet John Marjoloni, your future President of the United States. When he has a goal, nothing gets in his way. John wants to be the President someday. Before the dream comes true, he will most likely go to law school and probably do a little acting on the side. John is a boy who knows what he wants. He wants success. A past teacher described John with these three little words: "full of life." She went on to explain that he lit up her classroom every single day. John's PE teacher described John as having an energetic personality, as being a role model to his peers, and always being ready and willing to help. John works hard in all his subject areas and achieves high grades. His favorite subject is reading. He truly enjoys a good book and always invites insightful thoughts to share. It is a pleasure to sit down with John and discuss his beliefs on books and other issues. Aside from reading, in John's spare time, he loves to ride his bike on trails and around the neighborhood. He participates in the Northeast School Chorus, Student Council, and Math Olympiads. John possesses strong qualities which no doubt will help him achieve all future endeavors. Northeast School highly recommends John Marjoloni for the Superintendent's Board of Excellence. He's an outstanding student, friend, role model, and citizen. Congratulations. Next is Skinner Road School, called Caitlin Chatterton and Olivia McKister, along with Board Members Michelle Aron and Sandy Simon, our Principal. Caitlin Chatterton. Caitlin is known as a caring and thoughtful friend to all, always willing to help anyone and is a remarkable leader. She's respected by peers and teachers. Caitlin is involved in the school band, SRS Chorus, the Math Olympiads Group. She participates in helping kindergartners during her lunchtime. Caitlin is an SRS twirler, Student Council member, Safety Patrol, and is part of the SRS Marathon, Hartford Marathon Team. In Caitlin's free time, she enjoys participating in soccer, basketball, softball, lacrosse... Where do you have time, you all? Being an altar server at St. Bridget's Church in Manchester, where she also attends CCD classes. Fin is hard to achieve excellence. She's an outstanding student, friend, citizen, and role model at Skinner Road School. I highly recommend Caitlin Chatterton for the Skinner Road School Superintendent of the Year. Congratulations. Olivia is a student who accepts challenging work and that desires to be the best she can be. Olivia plays the trumpet, is part of the Math Olympiads Team, is on the Safety Patrol. Olivia is cherished by her peers and teachers and is a model signifying respect and responsibility. Olivia is extremely organized, socially linked by all students, outgoing, and a pleasure to add to class. To keep energetic when she is not at a Hollywood equine, Olivia enjoys playing goalie for the team in Madrid and playing basketball in the winter. Her family attends St. Bernard's in Rockville, where she also attends CCD classes. Olivia is a stupendous student, friend, citizen, and role model at Skinner Road School. She's highly recommended for the Superintendent's Award. Congratulations. From Vernon Center Middle School, Joseph Chatterton and Gazira Rodriguez Hernandez, along with Principal James Harrison and Steven Lippin. That is one of the words for family, but that's okay. Joseph Chatterton. During his three years of BCMS, Joe has always maintained high honor roll status and has been a member of the EG Club, receiving all excellent and good ratings in the areas of behavior, effort, and report cards. Joe's teachers describe him as an academic and social leader, although quietly leads by example. Joe's consistency and maturity are unparalleled. Joe works hard in every subject, giving 100%. He's kind and considerate with his peers, willing to help whoever needs it. On the boys' soccer team, Joe is the goalie, a demanding, high-stress position. Once again, he's a quiet leader, leading by example. Joe always exhibits great sportsmanship and is an asset to the Vernon Public Schools. Congratulations, Joe. Yasnaire is a very hard worker who has earned honor roll several times during her three years of BCMS. Yasnaire is a role model who leads by example. She's well behaved, self-advocates, and is respectful. Yasnaire is working hard this year, in her own words, to better herself. She cares deeply about doing her best all the time. She has a positive attitude in and out of the classroom. Last year, Yasnaire participated in the runners' club, and this year is a member of the cross-country team. She's also a member of the EPOC Art Program, a program for gifted artists who give back to their community through their artistic work. Yasnaire is described by her teachers as polite, helpful, and mature beyond her years. She's a sweet young lady who's smile helps brighten everyone's day. From Rockville High School, Winona Schaff, Isaac Billings, our Principal Amy Rocket, and Mr. David Cap, our Board Member. Winona Schaff. Throughout her time at Rockville High School, Winona Schaff, daughter of Jordan and Elizabeth Schaff, have been an outstanding member of our community. She seeks opportunities within and outside the classroom that allow her to hone her skills and deepen her knowledge in English and Spanish, and she appreciates the value of experimental learning. Last year, Winona was selected to participate in the Bretoff Young Writers, the renowned writers' conference at Middlebury College. Additionally, Winona has enrolled in some of the most challenging courses and has worked with teachers to design an independent study course where she will gain experience as a teacher's assistant. She's also part of the Creative Writing Independent Study Program, where she will work with several other selected students to write and direct our annual Vernon mystery. Winona is a member of our varsity soccer team and has served as co-caplan for the last two years. Varsity outdoor track team and has served as co-caplan for the last two years with Unified Sports. Additionally, she's currently serving as Vice President of Student Council and Vice President of the Class of 2016. She's also a member of the School Governance Council, Peer Advocates, National Honor Society, won the Mayoral Special Olympics, and participated in the Rock-a-thon this past January. Winona will be pursuing a post-secondary degree in the fall of 2016 that combines her love and appreciation of literature, writing, and communication. Congratulations, Winona. Isaac Billings. Isaac is currently a senior at Rockville High School. He's ranked 13 out of a class of 155. His highest SAT scores are 770 critical reading and 710 math. I would love those scores. He has been the president of the class for the past three years. He's a varsity athlete and this year will be captain of the Rockville High School Varsity Baseball Team. He's a member of the Link Crew, Peer Advocates, Student Council, and our Students' Leadership Program. Awards he has won include Excellence in Service, Excellence in English Tech, and Excellence in Physical Education. He has volunteered his time with Enzo, Hartzell, Unified Sports, and We Are Children. He is the voice of Rockville High School's morning announcements. He plays on campus either the University of Connecticut or the University of Colorado at Boulder with a major in communications or media. Congratulations, Aiden. Congratulations. I'd like to call up Elizabeth Foran and Steve Phelps from our Vernon Adult Educational Regional Executive National Program, and Stuart Bajurek, our Board Member. Elizabeth Foran is a tenacious and dedicated student. The Credit Diploma Program has been very fortunate to have her as one of their own since February of 2015, and in that time, she's become a valuable part of the community. Not only is she a respectful and helpful young woman, but she's consistent in her work. A gifted writer, Elizabeth gives 100% effort to every assignment she's given, regardless of the difficulties that she encounters. We, the Vernon Regional Adult Education Program, are impressed by Elizabeth's accomplishments and look forward to watching her continued success. Congratulations. Congratulations. So as an educator, one of the best parts of being a teacher is giving homework. I know, I heard those boos on... that's okay. So every student today receives a conation. And in the long-term education of journey, there's always one person that helps you, that befriends you, that gives you advice, that nurtures you. It could be a parent, it could be a relative, it could be a friend. Your homework for our 15 students is to take that conation and give it to the one person who made a difference in your life. At this time, we have our last set of awards, and they are our Profiles in Professionalism Award. I'm going to call upon our Assistant Superintendent, Robert Testa, to present it to us. Good evening. This evening, we will recognize seven members of our school community for their dedication and commitment to Vernon Public Schools. Unfortunately, not everyone could attend. I'm still going to read their names and read their nomination as well. From Vernon Center Middle School, Jennifer Toller, special education teacher. Mrs. Toller couldn't attend this evening, however, she was nominated by Melissa Bocheck, Daniela Bellinger, and Danielle Pierce. Jen is a genuine and compassionate educator. She goes above and beyond to provide assistance, instruction, and support for all students. She is an asset to BCMS in the district and is an individual who embodies all the values and strengths that Vernon Public Schools aim to represent. A nice round of applause for Mrs. Toller. From Rockville High School, I'd like to ask Patricia Goff to please come forward. Mrs. Goff is a family consumer sciences teacher. She was nominated by Lori Gilmore, Diane Madore, and Michael Moss. Pat is a dedicated teacher. Her commitment to our students goes beyond merely educational, to the social and emotional well-being as well. She is caring and compassionate and holds her students to a high standard. Pat goes above and beyond for her students and colleagues. If there is a need, Pat is there to help. Congratulations. From Rockville High School, our Technology Education Department Head, Mr. Brian Wright. Please come forward. Brian was nominated by Trish Buchanan, Nicole Fillion, Karen Lipsky, and Mr. Andy Rocket. Brian represents the highest possible ideal in teaching. He is an excellent leader and contributor to the overall RHS educational community, donating time and effort to every event. He is a wonderful and supportive colleague to other teachers and staff, helping in any and every way he can. Brian's passion for his work is evident in everything he does. On behalf of the Profiles in Professionalism Committee, congratulations. From Rockville High School, parent educator, Gay McTibbe. Gay was nominated by Joe Pragnano, Richard O'Brien, and Deborah Cho. Gay is an outstanding parent educator. Her dedication to students as well as her commitment to the Rockville High School community are two examples of her professionalism. She is an advocate for students and gently guides them to always do their best. She believes that every student can achieve more and work with them, and works with them to reach higher expectations. Congratulations to Gay. From Rockville High School, Conrad Campbell, custodian. Please step forward. Mr. Campbell was nominated by Jeff Bettenger, Chris Fortier, and Pat Goff. Conrad is dedicated, hardworking, reliable, and always professional. He goes above and beyond normal duties. He's always very cordial and willing to help with happy, helpful, positive attitude. Conrad is highly respected by all that know him and work with him. He's a great asset to Rockville High School. From Center Road School, reading specialist Christine Piscatelli. Christine was nominated by Ian Timbrough, Deborah Fillmore, and Kim Cheaman. Christine cares deeply about the students she teaches, thinking, applying, and constantly researching to find the teaching and learning methods that will support their reading needs and growth. She is extremely hardworking and never stops thinking about how to help teachers and students. Christine is always willing to go the extra mile. Our last recipient this evening is from Center Road School, reading specialist Deborah Fillmore. Deborah retired in June. However, this award is really recognized her, even in her last year of teaching, she made an impression on her students and the community. Deb was nominated by Beth Keller, Janice Doherty, Floria Banjes, Christine Piscatelli, and Brandon Donick. Deb demonstrates the ability to motivate and inspire struggling readers, and she instills confidence and successfully encourages them to reach their goals. The quality and care in Deb's instruction is reflected in the enormous growth in learning of her students. She is a knowledgeable and passionate teacher. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Testa. Just two things before we leave. We do have the fresh ones outside for everyone to enjoy. Please come... please see us in the lobby. We want to congratulate you and talk to each of the recipients. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Education for their support of this endeavor, of this event, for all the work they do every year. They get paid enough. They work countless hours. I want to introduce them all. From my immediate left moving forward, Mark Kalina, Linda Getz, Steve Lipp, Ian Fisher, David Camp, Thomasina Russell, Lord Bajoris, Michelle Aron, and John Copack. Thank you for your service. Lastly, I'd like to leave you with a quote to reflect upon. This quote is from Margaret Kennedy. "There are those who look at things the way they are and ask why. I drew the things that never were and ask why now." Best of luck. Congratulations, everybody.